Greetings, respected guests, and welcome to the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. Today's event is not intended to be partisan in any way. Sponsors for this event include Ole Arts Magazine, Bowser's Books, the Northwest Playwrights Alliance, TC Media, and the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. Over the course of the day, a variety of readers from our local government and community will be reading thirty minutes of materials from the document known as the Mueller Report. Each reader has been asked to present the material without commentary, and transitions between speakers will be very brief. When a reader comes to a section of text that has been redacted, they will indicate so by ringing a bell. We hope you find this information useful and enjoyable.
Gordon requested that platform committee personnel revise the proposed amendment to state that only appropriate assistance be provided to Ukraine. The original sponsor of the lethal assistance amendment stated that Gordon told her, the sponsor, that he was on the phone with candidate Trump in connection with his request to dilute the language. Gordon denied making that statement to the sponsor, although he acknowledged it was possible he mentioned having previously spoken to the candidate about the subject matter. The investigation did not establish that Gordon spoke to or was directed by the candidate to make that proposal. Gordon said that he sought the change because he believed the proposed language was inconsistent with Trump's position on Ukraine. A: Ambassador Kislyak's encounters with Senator Sessions and J.D. Gordon, the week of the RNC. In July 2016, Senator Sessions and Gordon spoke at the Global Partners in Diplomacy Event, a conference co-sponsored by the State Department and the Heritage Foundation, held in Cleveland, Ohio, the same week as the Republican National Convention (RNC) or convention. Approximately eighty foreign ambassadors to the United States, including Kislyak, were invited to the conference. On July 20, Gordon and Sessions delivered their speeches at the conference. In his speech, Gordon stated in pertinent part that the United States should have better relations with Russia. During Sessions' speech, he took questions from the audience, one of which may have been asked by Kislyak. When the speeches concluded, several ambassadors lined up to greet the speakers. Gordon shook hands with Kislyak and reiterated that he had meant what he said in the speech about improving U.S.-Russia relations. Sessions spoke separately between six and twelve ambassadors, including Kislyak. Although Sessions stated during interviews with the office that he had no specific recollection of what he discussed with Kislyak, he believed that the two spoke for only a few minutes and that they would have exchanged pleasantries and said some things about U.S.-Russia relations. Later that evening, Gordon attended a reception as part of the conference. Gordon ran into Kislyak as the two prepared plates of food, and they decided to sit at the same table to eat. They were joined at that table by the ambassadors from Azerbaijan and Kazakhstan and by Trump campaign adviser Carter Page. As they ate, Gordon and Kislyak talked for what Gordon estimated to be three to five minutes, during which Gordon again mentioned that he meant what he had said in his speech about improving U.S.-Russia relations. B: Change to Republican Party Platform. In preparation for the 2016 convention, foreign policy advisers to the Trump campaign, working with the Republican National Committee, reviewed the 2012 convention's foreign policy platform to identify divergence between the earlier platform and candidate Trump's positions. The campaign team discussed toning down language from the 2012 platform that identified Russia as the country's number-one threat, given the candidate's belief that there needed to be better U.S. relations with Russia. The RNC platform committee sent the 2016 draft platform to the National Security and Defense Platforms Subcommittee on July 10, 2016, the evening before its first meeting to propose amendments. Although only delegates could participate in formal discussions and vote on the platform, the Trump campaign could request changes, and members of the Trump campaign attended committee meetings. John Mashburn, the campaign's policy adviser, helped oversee the campaign's involvement in the platform committee meetings. He told the office that he directed campaign staff at the convention, including J.D. Gordon, to take a hands-off approach and only to challenge platform planks if they directly contradicted Trump's wishes. On July 11, 2016, delegate Diana Denman submitted a proposed platform amendment that included provision of armed support for Ukraine. The amendment described Russia's ongoing military aggression in Ukraine and announced support for maintaining and, if warranted, increasing sanctions on Russia until Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity are fully restored, and for providing lethal defensive weapons to Ukraine's armed forces and greater coordination with NATO on defense planning. Gordon reviewed the proposed platform change, including Denman's. Gordon stated that he flagged this amendment because of Trump's stated position on Ukraine, which Gordon personally heard the candidate say at the March 31 Foreign Policy Meeting, namely that the Europeans should take primary responsibility for any assistance to Ukraine, that there should be improved U.S.-Russia relations, and that he did not want to start World War III over that region. Gordon told the office that Trump's statements on the campaign trail following the March meeting underscored these positions to the point where Gordon felt obligated to object to the proposed platform change and see its dilution. On July 11, 2016, at a meeting of the National Security and Defense Platforms Subcommittee, Denman offered her amendment. Gordon and another campaign staffer, Matt Miller, approached a committee co-chair and asked him to table the amendment to permit further discussion. Gordon's concern with the amendment was the language about providing lethal defense weapons to Ukraine. Miller did not have any independent basis to believe that this language contradicted Trump's views and relied on Gordon's recollection of the candidate's views. According to Denman, she spoke with Gordon and Matt Miller, and they told her that they had to clear the language and that Gordon was talking to New York. Denman told others that she was asked by two Trump campaign staffers to strike lethal defense weapons from the proposal, but that she refused. Denman recalled Gordon saying that he was on the phone with candidate Trump, but she was skeptical whether that was really true. Gordon denied having told Denman that he was on the phone with Trump, although he acknowledged it was possible that he mentioned having previously spoken to the candidate about the subject matter. Gordon's phone records reveal a call to Sessions' office in Washington that afternoon, but do not include calls directly to a number associated with Trump. And according to the president's written answers to the office's questions, he does not recall being involved in the change in language of the platform amendment. Gordon stated that he tried to reach Rick Dearborn, a senior foreign policy adviser, and Mashburn, the campaign policy adviser. Gordon stated that he connected with both of them. He could not recall if it was by phone or in person, and apprised them of the language that he took issue with in the proposed amendment. Gordon recalled no objection by either Dearborn or Mashburn, and that all three campaign advisers supported the alternative formulation: appropriate assistance. Dearborn recalled Gordon warning them about the amendment but not weighing in because Gordon was more familiar with the campaign's foreign policy stance. Mashburn stated that Gordon reached him, and he told Gordon that Trump had not taken a stance on the issue and that campaign should not intervene. When the amendment came up again in the committee's proceedings, the subcommittee changed the amendment by striking the lethal defense weapons language and replacing it with appropriate assistance. Gordon stated that he and the subcommittee co-chair ultimately agreed to replace the language without armed assistance, about armed assistance with appropriate assistance. The subcommittee accordingly approved Denman's amendment, but with the term appropriate assistance. Gordon stated that, to his recollection, this was the only change sought by the campaign. Sam Clovis, the campaign's national co-chair and chief policy adviser, stated he was surprised by the change and did not believe it was in line with Trump's stance. Mashburn stated that when he saw the word "appropriate assistance," he believed that Gordon had violated Mashburn's directive to not intervene. Seven: Post-convention contacts with Kislyak. Ambassador Kislyak continued his efforts to interact with campaign officials with responsibility for the foreign policy portfolio, among them Sessions and Gordon, in the weeks after the convention. The office did not identify evidence in those interactions of coordination between the campaign and the Russian government. A: Ambassador Kislyak invites J.D. Gordon to breakfast at the ambassador's residence. On August 3, 2016, an official from the embassy of the Russian Federation of the United States wrote to Gordon on behalf of Ambassador Kislyak inviting Gordon to have breakfast or tea with the ambassador at his residence in Washington, D.C. the following week. Gordon responded five days later to decline the invitation. He wrote, "These days are not optimal for us as we are busily knocking down a constant stream of false media stories while also preparing for the first debate with HRC. We hope to take a rain check for another time when things quiet down a bit. Please pass along my regards to the ambassador." The investigation did not identify evidence that Gordon made any other arrangements to meet or met with Kislyak after this email. B: Senator Sessions' September 2016 meeting with Ambassador Kislyak. Also in August 2016, a representative of the Russian Embassy contacted Sessions' Senate Office about setting up a meeting with Kislyak. At the time, Sessions was a member of the Senate Foreign Relations Committee and would meet with foreign officials in that capacity. But Sessions' staff reported, and Sessions himself acknowledged, that meeting requests from ambassadors increased substantially in 2016, as Sessions assumed a prominent role in the Trump campaign, and his name was mentioned for potential cabinet-level positions in a future Trump administration. On September 8, 2016, Sessions met with Kislyak in his Senate office. Sessions said that he believed that he was doing the campaign a service by meeting with foreign ambassadors, including Kislyak. He was accompanied in the meeting by at least two of his Senate staff: Sandra Luff, his legislative director, and Pete Landrum, who handled military affairs. The meeting lasted less than thirty minutes. Sessions' votes voiced concerns about Russia's sale of a missile defense system to Iran, Russian planes buzzing U.S. military assets in the Middle East, and Russian aggression in emergency democracies such as Ukraine and Moldova. Kislyak offered explanations on these issues and complained about NATO land forces in former Soviet bloc countries that border Russia. Landrum recalled that Kislyak referred to the presidential campaign as "an interesting campaign," and Sessions also recalled Kislyak saying that the Russian government was receptive to the overtures Trump had laid out during his campaign. None of the attendees, though, remembered any discussion of Russian election interference or any request that Sessions convey information from the Russian government to the Trump campaign. During the meeting, Kislyak invited Sessions to further discuss U.S.-Russia relations with him over a meal at the ambassador's residence. Sessions was noncommittal when Kislyak extended the invitation. After the meeting ended, Luff advised Sessions against accepting the one-on-one meeting with Kislyak, whom she assessed to be an old-school KGB guy. Neither Luff nor Landrum recalled that Sessions followed up on the invitation or made any further effort to dine or meet with Kislyak before the November 2016 election. Sessions and Landrum recalled that after the election, some efforts were made to arrange a meeting between Sessions and Kislyak. According to Sessions, the request came through CNI and would have involved a meeting between Sessions and Kislyak to other ambassadors and the governor of Alabama. Sessions, however, was in New York on the day of the anticipated meeting and was unable to attend. The investigation did not identify evidence that the two men met at any point after their September 8 meeting. Eight: Paul Manafort. Paul Manafort served on the Trump campaign, including a period as campaign chairman, from March to August of 2016. Manafort had connections to Russia through his prior work for Russian oligarch Oleg Derispaska, and later through his work for a pro-Russian regime in Ukraine. Manafort stayed in touch with these contacts during the campaign period through Konstantin Kalimnik, a longtime Manafort employee who previously ran Manafort's office in Kiev and who the FBI assesses to have ties to Russian intelligence. Manafort instructed Rick Gates, his deputy on the campaign and longtime employee, to provide Kalimnik with updates on the Trump campaign, including internal polling data, although Manafort claims to not recall that specific instruction. Manafort expected Kalimnik to share that information with others in Ukraine and with Derispaska. Gates periodically sent such polling data to Kalimnik during the campaign. Manafort also met twice with Kalimnik in the United States during the campaign period and conveyed campaign information. The second meeting took place on August 2, 2016, in New York City. Kalimnik requested the meeting to deliver in person a message from former Ukrainian president Viktor Yukanovich, who was then living in Russia. The message was about a peace plan for Ukraine that Manafort has since acknowledged was a backdoor means for Russia to control eastern Ukraine. Several months later after the presidential election, Kalimnik wrote an email to Manafort expressing the view, which Manafort later said he shared, that the planned success would require U.S. support to succeed. All that is required to start the process is a very minor wink or slight push from Donald Trump. The email also stated that if Manafort were designated as the U.S. representative and started the process, Yunikovitch would ensure his reception in Russia at the very top level. Manafort communicated with Kalimnik about peace plans for Ukraine on at least four occasions after their first discussion of the topic on August 2. December 2016, the Kalimnik email described above, January 2017, February 2017, and then again in the spring of 2018. The office reviewed numerous Manafort email and text communications and asked President Trump about the plan in written questions. The investigation did not uncover evidence of Manafort's passing along information about Ukrainian peace plans to the candidate or to anyone else in the campaign or the administration. The office was not, however, able to gain access to all of Manafort's electronic communications. In some instances, messages were sent using encryption applications. And while Manafort denied that he spoke to members of the Trump campaign or the new administration about the peace plan, he lied to the office and the grand jury about the peace plan and his meetings with Kalimnik. And his unreliability on this subject was among the reasons that the district judge found that he breached his cooperation agreement. The office could not reliably determine Manafort's purpose in sharing internal polling data with Kalimnik during the campaign period. Manafort did not see a downside to sharing campaign information and told Gates that his role in the campaign would be good for business and potentially a way to be made whole for work he previously completed in the Ukraine. As due Derispaska, Manafort claimed that by sharing campaign information with him, Derispaska might see value in their relationship and resolve a disagreement, a reference to one or more outstanding lawsuits. Because of questions about Manafort's credibility and our limited ability to gather evidence on what happened to the polling data after it was sent to Kalimnik, the office could not assess what Kalimnik, or others he may have given it to, did with it. The office did not identify evidence of a connection between Manafort's sharing polling data and Russia's interference in the election, which had already been reported by U.S. media outlets at the time of the August 2 meeting. The investigation did not establish that Manafort otherwise coordinated with the Russian government on its election interference efforts. A: Paul Manafort's ties to Russia and Ukraine. Manafort's Russian contacts during the campaign and transition periods stem from his consulting work for Derispaska from approximately 2005 to 2009, and his separate political consulting work in Ukraine from 2005 to 2015, including through his company's DMP International LLC, also known as DMI. Kalimnik worked for Manafort in Kiev during this entire period and continued to communicate with Manafort through at least June of 2018. Kalimnik, who speaks and writes Ukrainian and Russian, facilitated many of Manafort's communications with Derispaska and Ukrainian oligarchs. One: Oleg Derispaska consulting work. In approximately 2005, Manafort began working for Derispaska, a Russian oligarch who has a global empire involving aluminum and power companies and who is closely aligned with Vladimir Putin. A memorandum describing work that Manafort performed for Derispaska in 2005 regarding the post-Soviet republics referenced the need to brief the Kremlin and the benefits that the work would confer on the Putin government. Gates described the work Manafort did for Derispaska as "political risk insurance," and explained that Derispaska used Manafort to install friendly political officials in countries where Derispaska had business interests. Manafort's company earned tens of millions of dollars for its work for Derispaska and was loaned millions of dollars by Derispaska as well. In 2007, Derispaska invested through another entity in Pericles Emerging Market Partners LP, also known as Pericles, an investment fund created by Manafort and former Manafort business partner Richard Davis. The Pericles Fund was established to pursue investments in Eastern Europe. Derispaska was the sole investor. Gates stated in interviews with the office that the venture led to a deterioration of the relationship between Manafort and Derispaska. In particular, when the fund failed, litigation between Manafort and Derispaska ensued. Gates stated that by 2009, Manafort's business relationship with Derispaska had dried up. According to Gates, various interactions with Derispaska and his intermediaries over the past few years has involved trying to resolve the legal dispute. As described below, in 2016, Manafort, Gates, Kalimnik, and others engaged in efforts to revive the Derispaska relationship and resolve the litigation. Two: Political consulting work. Through Derispaska, Manafort was introduced to Reinat Akhmatov, a Ukrainian oligarch who hired Manafort as a political consultant. In 2005, Akhmatov hired Manafort to engage in political work supporting the Party of Regions, a political party in Ukraine that was generally understood to align with Russia. Manafort assisted the Party of Regions in regaining power and its candidate Viktor Yanukovych, who won the presidency in 2010. Manafort became a close and trusted political adviser of Yanukovych during his time as president of Ukraine. Yanukovych served in that role until 2014, when he fled to Russia amidst popular protests. Three: Konstantin Kalimnik. Kalimnik is a Russian national who has lived in both Russia and Ukraine and was a longtime Manafort employee. Kalimnik had direct and close access to Yanukovych and his senior entourage, and he facilitated communications between Manafort and his clients, including Yunikovitch and multiple Ukrainian oligarchs. Kalimnik also maintained a relationship with Derispaska's deputy Viktor Proyarkin, a Russian national who previously served in the Defense Attache Office of the Russian Embassy to the United States. Manafort told the office that he did not believe Kalimnik was working as a Russian spy. The FBI, however, assesses that Kalimnik has ties to Russian intelligence. Several pieces of the office's evidence, including witness interviews and emails obtained through court-authorized search warrants, support that assessment. Kalimnik was born on April 27, 1970, in Donetsk Oblast, then of the Soviet Union, and attended the Military Institute of the Ministry of Defense from 1987 until 1992. Sam Patton, a business partner to Kalimnik, stated that Kalimnik told him that he was a translator in the Russian Army for seven years and later worked in the Russian armament industry, selling arms and military equipment. U.S. government visa records reveal that Kalimnik obtained a visa to travel to the United States with a Russian diplomatic passport in 1997. Kalimnik worked for the International Republican Institutes, or the IRI Moscow Office, where he did translation work and general office management from 1998 to 2005, while another official recalled the incident differently. One former associate of Kalimnik's at IRI told the FBI that Kalimnik was fired from his post because his links to Russian intelligence were too strong. The same individual stated that it was well-known at IRI that Kalimnik had links to the Russian government. Jonathan Hawker, a British national who was a public relations consultant at FTI Consulting, worked with DMI on a public relations campaign for Yanukovych. After Hawker's work for DMI ended, Kalimnik contacted Hawker about working for a Russian government entity on a public relations project that would promote, in Western and Ukrainian media, Russia's position on its 2014 invasion of Crimea. Gates suspected that Kalimnik was a spy, a view that he shared with Manafort, Hawker, and Alexander Van der Woon, an attorney who had worked with DMI on a report for the Ukrainian Ministry of Foreign Affairs. B: Contacts between Paul Manafort's time with the Trump administration. Paul Manafort joins the campaign. Manafort served on the Trump campaign from late March to August 19 of 2016. On March 29, 2016, the campaign announced that Manafort would serve as the campaign's convention manager. On May 19, 2016, Manafort was promoted to campaign chairman and chief strategist, and Gates, who had been assisting Manafort on the campaign, was appointed deputy campaign manager. Thomas Barak and Roger Stone both recommended Manafort to candidate Trump. In early 2016, at Manafort's request, Barak suggested to Trump that Manafort join the campaign to manage the Republican convention. Stone had worked with Manafort from approximately 1980 until the mid-1990s through various consulting and lobbying firms. Manafort met Trump in 1982, when Trump hired the Black Manafort, Stone, and Kelly lobbying firm. Over the years, Manafort saw Trump at political and social events in New York City and at Stone's wedding, and Trump requested VIP status in the 1988 and 1996 Republican conventions, which were worked by Manafort. According to Gates, in March 2016, Manafort traveled to Trump's Mar-a-Lago estate in Florida to meet with Trump. Trump hired him at that time. Manafort agreed to work on the campaign without pay. Manafort had no meaningful income at this point in time, but resuscitated his domestic political campaign career that could be financially beneficial for the future. Gates reported that Manafort intended, if Trump won the presidency, to remain outside of the administration and monetize his relationship with the administration. Two: Paul Manafort's campaign-period contacts. Immediately upon joining the campaign, Manafort directed Gates to prepare for his review separate memoranda addressed to Derispaska, Akhmatov, Sergei Lowvotchen, and Boris Kolosnokov, the last three being Ukrainian oligarchs who were senior opposition bloc officials. The memoranda described Manafort's appointment to the Trump campaign and indicated his willingness to consult on Ukrainian politics in the future. On March 30, 2016, On March 30, 2016, Gates emailed the memoranda and a press release announcing Manafort's appointment to Kalimnik for translation and dissemination. Manafort later followed up with Kalimnik to ensure his messages had been delivered, emailing on April 11 of 2016 to ask whether Kalimnik had shown our friends the media coverage of his new role. Kalimnik replied, "Absolutely every article." Manafort further asked, "How do we use to get hold? Has OVID, meaning Oleg Vladimir Derispaska, operation seen?" Kalimnik wrote back the same day, "Yes, I've been sending everything to Viktor, who has been forwarding the coverage directly to OVID." Gates reported that Manafort had been hired on the campaign, and that would be good for business and increase the likelihood that Manafort would be paid the approximately $2 million he was owed for previous political consulting work in Ukraine. Gates also explained to the office that Manafort thought his role on the campaign could help confirm that Derispaska had dropped the Pericles lawsuit and that Gates believed Manafort sent polling data to Derispaska, as discussed further below, so that Derispaska would not move forward with his lawsuit against Manafort.